Thirty, I'll bring to order the council meeting of June the 25th. We have an agenda in front of us. There is one addition to the agenda, 5.3.1. It is a planning issue, request to withdraw application for redesignation. Are there any other additions or deletions to the agenda? If not, I would be looking for, okay, Councillor Christie?
I'll move to adopt the agenda as amended.
Motion's been made to adopt the agenda as amended. All those in favor? That is carried. Precirculated the council meeting minutes of June the 11th. Are there any omissions? Or corrections? Councillor King?
I'd make the motion to accept the minutes of the June 11th meeting as presented.
Motion's been made to accept the minutes as presented. All those in favor? That is carried. We will move on to 5.1, transportation. And anytime you're ready, Laurie.
Good morning, council. I bring to you this morning just a quick update from municipal services. This is kind of covers where we've been for the last few months, some of the things we're working on right now. And some of the projects that we're going to complete this summer. This won't advance, Karen. Okay, got it, sorry. So the first department here is our planning department. This is a pretty comprehensive summary of where we've been since 2013 with respect to subdivisions, developments, redesignations, safety codes, and construction costs. The numbers here for 2019 are as at the end of May. June has been fairly busy as well, too. For, we have MPC this week and there are quite a few files for that meeting. Construction costs for 2018 were quite significant, 62 million. That is basically a large result of the Grains Connect project as well as Phase One of the solar farm. So things are back down to a normal level for the construction costs to date. And here's just a couple of photos of some of the major projects. The two photos on the left-hand side there are the wedding barn. They're up and running this summer. And the other four photos here are photos of the construction of the Grains Connect facility. The last one here is the final pour. They call it the six-pack. And that happened around the first part of May. It was a 24-hour pour that lasted just over a week. And this photo here is taken from the top of the four-pack that was completed last fall. So Grains Connect is hoping to be up and operating later this fall. On the egg services side, we've hosted several educational sessions. Those are listed there. Quite well attended, all of them. One of the new workshops this year has been around Club Root. And we hosted that earlier this year. We had about 40 people in attendance. Some significant sales for our Stricknine this year, approximately double of what we've seen in previous years. So we're likely seeing a record in sales this year. We did do a second order, so and around, we've sold about 80 cases. Our long table dinner scheduled for August of this year is sold out as of a couple of weeks ago, so that's some good news. So we'll continue working on the final plans for that event. We have about 23 vendors for the country market that are confirmed as well. So going forward, we're conducting our road, our right-of-way spraying mid to the end of July in the North Third of the county. Roadside mowing will start again about the middle of August. And yeah, I think that's about it for an update on ASB. We have an ASB meeting tomorrow as well, too, tomorrow morning. On our parks and egg side, cemeteries, there's still some work that we're finishing up on our cemetery boundary project that confirmed the boundaries of a lot of the cemeteries that we look after here and manage. Arthurville, we're still waiting for registration and transfer of title on that one. This year, we're rehabbing some headstones at Mount Davis. We kind of move from one cemetery to the next each year and continue with our regular maintenance at all of the sites. So our park hosts have returned for the 2019 season. This will be their second year here. We did a little bit more landscaping around, excuse me, the group site, Site Eight. A little bit more tree maintenance, some damage on some of the pathways that was created earlier this year. And we've repainted the camp kitchen and interior, camp kitchen interior and installed some lights there. Horseshoe Canyon, we completed the master plan earlier this year with council. We've reinforced some fencing and retaining wall along the pathways. We've been reclaiming some of the damaged trails and slopes that have happened just from erosion over the years and just from people traffic. Planting trees along the west fence where the helicopter was located and Bone has also told me that the gophers have kind of moved in there too as well. So we've had quite a problem controlling that. Installing stonework around the picnic shelter that is located at the top of the lookout there. And we've installed three-phase power to that site as well, the helicopter, the former helicopter site. And that'll help with hosting of the different events that we have there. On the environmental services side, so new water services, ones that had an existing riser so that would have been part of construction. There were seven of them connected. New water services installed that didn't have a riser, there were six installed. So still some growth on these systems, which is good. And we did have one new service in one of our hamlets. We did repair water breaks on both the Equity and the Vernon system. So Churchill, oh, and some minor issues with Aqua Seven. And that was probably just as a result of some change, some minor maintenance that was done on that, on that line. So Churchill Water, the rehabilitation project, tenders did close on June 4th. And we did meet with them last week. Those tenders have been awarded. And we're just waiting on the contracts to be signed. They were the two lowest tenders that were confirmed, so we should be just slightly under our project budget for those two. And as far as I understand, things are on track and the construction should start shortly and be completed later this fall. On the protective services side, so we're really excited to welcome our third peace officer to our team. Rory Gamble has joined us and he's going to be focusing mostly on bylaw. He'll also be working with our departments, operations, planning, and egg service on various enforcement files. So our presence in the, on the railroads and the communities will continue over the next few months with Rory joining us. Excuse me, Peace Officer Chabella, she continues to work forge ahead with her program, the Driving Hero program. Kind of a positive ticketing program. And we did recognize several vehicles that were doing the speed limit on Highway 583, so trying to keep our roads safe. And we've also had a presence with our peace officers at most of our community parades over the past few weeks here. On the emergency management side, some unpredictable weather over the last few weeks here. So we're just reinforcing to everybody to be ready with a 72-hour kit. And just with the recent fires in Northern Alberta, too. Working with our neighbors and developing action plans and practice sessions to respond to anything of significance that we might be affected by as well. Our Torrington Fire Hall has a nice, fresh new look. We've completed painting on both the interior and exterior of the building there. A new racking system for gear for the firefighters. It says here we'll be installed shortly. I think they have completed that. And then we'll focus more so in the next few weeks on our towers and inventory with our Rural Fire Chief will be working on that. We also want to send a thank you out to the Torrington Egg Society. While we were completing the painting on the building, we did relocate our fire services into the arena. And they facilitated that for us. So no hiccups in our operations and we were able So no hiccups in our operations, and we were able to respond out of that building. So on the transportation side, our shoulder pole is complete for 2019. We completed about 42 miles. We also went back and completed six miles that we weren't able to complete last year because the rains moved in. So some of our crews are busy picking rocks and grass sitting along the shoulder pole roads. Quite a few of those surface as we complete those projects. Micro-surfacing around, along Township Road 30-4, which is east of Linden, and Range Road 25-4, which is the nursing home road that's being worked on, should be completed towards the end of June. Micro-surface and street repairs in Swallowell completed also as well with this project. CN rail crossings, they've been milled and paved for a smoother ride. And those are the crossings at Linden Road, excuse me, the hamlet in Swallowell, and along the Buffalo Jump Road. So those should be a little bit smoother transition. And we did complete quite a comprehensive tree assessment program last year. There was over 400 trees in the hamlet of Torrington that are on Neheal County property. So we've identified trees that are unhealthy and pose a risk to the county. These trees have been taken down by a contractor, and we've disposed of the debris. So the same type of assessment is going to be completed in the hamlet of Huxley this year. And just a quick little update on our dust control program for 2019. We had calcium applications, we had 50. Compared to last year, we had 76. And the year before, we had 46. So we, this is quite typical. We see it usually a bit of an increase every other year. And on the spec, we had just one for this year. We did have quite a few spec that we did as part of the shoulder pole program, the ones where we were, completed the shoulder pole, and then we'll come back and do their spec crewed for the following year. On the Greg Stockpile, so this is a new stockpile site that is just north of Trosu. The site is fenced, and we'll start stripping and base, preparing the base required for gravel stockpile later this year. Oh, sorry. On our Sharples Road, which is Range Road 22-5, it's well underway, the construction. We've completed the shoulder pole, which happened at both ends of the construction. And that one is well on track. And Highway 583 East, we're doing our own internal work there. So this is kind of where the, the end of the road, where transportation looks after it. We're going to complete a shoulder pole into the hill this year, and that should control a lot of the washboard that we've seen over the previous years. And that concludes the update for municipal services.
Okay, thanks, Lori. Are there any questions from council? No, doesn't look like there's any questions.
I'm just going to comment, I should slow down going through Torrington. I didn't even notice it had been painted.
Definitely the Buffalo Jump Crossing is way better than it was.
Good to hear.
Okay, great. We have a recommendation to receive as information. If anyone would like to make a motion. Counselor McGee.
I move to receive this report as information. I'm not on, am I?
I move to have this report received as information.
Okay, motion's been made to receive for information. All those in favor, and that is carried. We will move on to 5.1.2. Bradley, welcome. How's the big spender doing today? Oh, great, great to hear.
Well, morning, members of council, Mr. Reeve. Today is an RFD for Bridge File 7505 and Bridge File 71693. Both these bridge files were submitted last year, part of the STIP program with the provincial government. These two were picked out of the number of ones that we sent to them to be basically funded 75% by the government. So we found this out after our budgets had closed. So now we're coming to council today to amend the, or ask for budget reserves of up to 250,000 to start our engineering this year. Depends what the engineering would be, how long those approvals from AEP will be, whether they would be finished construction this year or not. That's really those provincial regulations and approvals that hold us up. But we could start the engineering with some of this funding. Both these structures are estimated at 500,000. Depends what happens with the structure. If it's a complete replacement, we could see 500. If there's a possibility of putting in a liner, we could see a reduced amount into those culverts, so. Any questions on any of those bridge files?
I could give just maybe an update where they are.
Sure.
7505 is over by the Muter Flight Crossing. So it's, it's basically got separation in the seams of that culvert. So water is flowing through, go back there into that separation and around the outlet. The other one, 71693, is the road between Carbon and Sharples. That culvert is same thing, separating that couplers. So putting a liner in there would be ideal, so whether technology assessment tells us that we can line those, so. Well, the engineers tell us exactly what we can do there. Both of these structures are not on creeks, so that speeds up the process of AEP. But again, still water wrap approval and all that stuff, so. I don't foresee any vehicle issues with these because they're not on the main creeks. So if they're far enough away from the creeks where you would see upstream issues with fish.
Okay, thanks, Brad. Does council have any questions for Brad? If not, there is a motion, if someone chooses to make that. Counselor King.
So I'd make the motion that council approve the additional capital project in the 2019 budget, further replacement of BF 7505 and BF 71693 in the amount of 250,000, with the funding coming from the bridge reserve.
Thank you, Counselor King. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing as none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, and that is carried unanimously. Thank you. We'll go to 5.2.1. Welcome back, Lori. It's been a while.
Yes, thank you. I get to be John today. So Neheal County has received a request from the Town of Trosu to utilize the county landfill in Torrington for demolition material from the Pont Main School. A letter dated June 11, 2019 was received from Neheal County, from the Town of Trosu. The letter was a request from Trosu to haul debris from the demolition of the Pont Main School. Town of Trosu had made a similar request to Neheal County, and a motion was carried to allow the Town of Trosu's contractor to dispose of the demolition debris at the Neheal County Waste Disposal Site at a cost of 76, 75 per load. This motion was passed on June 28, 2011, so almost eight years ago. And since, there has been many years since this original request is being brought to council for consideration again. The Neheal County Waste Disposal Site is operated to offer residents of Neheal County a place to dispose of inert material in a controlled environment. Over the past few years, and since the last council motion to allow the disposal of the Pont Main School, staff at the disposal site have become diligent in preventing the overuse of the landfill by promoting and enforcing the sorting of loads to the various different sections of the site. This diligence is intended to extend the life of the landfill as long as possible. A site survey was completed by WSP in October 2018, and the estimated airspace remaining for the landfill pit was approximately nine years, with consideration given to the compaction capability of material received at the site, as well as the attention to diverting materials from the pit. The current pit in use is the last one of the three under the, our current environmental approval. The letter from the town does state that the demolition material is to be sorted to some capacity, with certain materials being retained by the town, and other material being taken to the Drumheller landfill. This will decrease the amount of loads requested with their original request in 2011. But there is no estimate of loads to come to Neheal County with this request. As a Class 3 facility, Neheal County may only accept inert construction material. It would have to be confirmed, the composition of the roofing materials, before we could accept them at the site. As per the current fee structure in place at the county site and the assumed size of the loads, the cost per load would be $80, and that's in our master rates bylaw. So we have attached there the letter from the Town of Trosu requesting the approval. And our recommended action is approve the request from the Town of Trosu to accept the waste debris from the demolition of the Pont Main School and receive said material at the Neheal County Waste Recovery Site located southwest of Torrington. All loads are to be screened by county employees for compliance and charged at the fee structure in place for non-residential loads.
Okay, thanks, Lori. Is there any questions from council? Counselor Penner.
So Lori, this, these loads will only be accepted on the days that the landfill is opened? Or will there be somebody there all the time?
Through the chair, Counselor Penner. As far as I understand, it'll be during our current operation. So there wouldn't be any additional staff time that would be required.
Counselor Keever.
So looking through what's going where, there won't be many loads coming our direction, will there?
Through the chair, Counselor Keever. No, there is, they are anticipating it will be significant reduction than what they had anticipated in 2011. They are retaining some of the materials. I think some of the cinder will be retained there in Trosu, but some of the other debris will be diverted directly to Drumheller.
I guess, and I know you can't answer this, Lori, but my concern is, is that it's pretty much open-ended here. I would like to have some sort of an idea how much material is coming to our site, and who determines whether it's suitable for our site? Do they have someone on site there to make sure that things are properly disposed of?
Yes, I think that's, they, the anticipated number of loads back in 2011 was about 50 to 60. So they are anticipating that to be quite reduced this year. We do have staff on site that'll inspect every load before it is dumped there. And if it's not acceptable, they'll be turned, turned back and diverted probably to Drumheller that can better manage it.
Okay, so our site superintendent will determine whether or not the material is suitable?
Yes, absolutely. And they are trained for that. They know exactly what can be put in there and what cannot. So if it's not acceptable, it'll be turned away.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions for Lori? What are council's wishes? Counselor Christie.
I'll make the motion to approve the request of the Town of Trosu to access, accept the waste debris from the demolition of the Pont Main School and receive the material at the Neheal County Waste Recovery Location southwest of Torrington. All those are to be screened by the county employees for compliance and charged to the fee structure in place by the non-residential loads.
Okay, motion's been made. Is there any discussion to that motion? Are these loads going to be weighed at any point in time?
We don't have the ability to weigh. We don't have a scale there, so we're just, we're just calling it a full load. So with their, their truck, it's a full load. Just the same way as what we would treat any other non-residential load that would come in, we'll treat them the same way.
Okay, so we don't have an idea how many metric tons or whatever's coming in, so. Okay. Are there any other, Counselor King?
Yeah, and we're going to just be clear with Trosu that the, our employees will screen, and we will turn back material considered non-acceptable.
Yep, through the chair, Counselor King. That's exactly correct. We'll screen every one of them and make it very clear to the Town of Trosu in our response to them, should council approve it, that each load will be checked, and if it's not acceptable, they will be turned away.
Is there any other discussion to the motion? Counselor McGee.
Do we want to put a cap on how many loads? That's my concern.
Counselor Penner.
I don't think we do, because I don't think we're going to see a lot of loads with the, the regulations and things right now. Because if there's any trace of contaminant, it'll be sent to Drumheller somewhere else. So I honestly don't think there will be a huge number of loads, but that's my feeling.
The Glen isn't afraid to reject loads of stuff out there. So I, I don't think that's a real worry.
All right, so what is council's wishes? Oh, we've already got a motion. Okay, I've figured out council's wishes. Is there any other discussion to the motion? Okay, seeing as none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. And let's move on to 5.4.1. Okay, maybe we won't. Just hang on a sec here. Let's go to public hearing 4.1. Oh, 5.3.1, sorry. I knew I had that here, but I just didn't have it here. Welcome, Barb. Sorry about that.
No worries. Good morning, Mr. Reeve and members of council. We received a request from an applicant to withdraw their application to redesignate a portion of the northwest of 293422, west of 4, from the Egg District to Industrial District, and that was bylaw 1798. Tim Stahl, the agent for the Hutterian Brotherhood Church of Huxley, has submitted a request to withdraw their application to redesignate a portion of their lands from the Egg District to the Industrial District for the purposes of constructing a standard cultivation facility for medical-use cannabis. First reading was completed on June 11, 2019, and the public hearing was scheduled for July 16 at 10:00 a.m. The notifications to adjacent landowners have been sent, and the ad has been scheduled for the Three Hills Capital. The notice was also placed on our website. Administration will ensure that adjacent landowners are notified of the canceled public hearing. We will also place one ad in the Three Hills Capital noting that it is canceled. No fee for withdrawn applications, and then no refund will be provided for the application fee. So the recommended action is that council move to cancel the public hearing for bylaw 1798 scheduled for July 16, 2019 at 10:00 a.m., as per the request of the applicant. And just for information, the bylaw will sit behind the scenes because it's already received first reading, so they have two years to come forward. Other than that, then it will die. So anyway, I just thought I'd clarify that.
Okay, thanks, Barb. Is there any, Counselor King?
I guess I would just make the motion that we do, that we cancel the public hearing at their request, and so the July 16 public hearing be canceled, based on the request from the applicant.
Okay, thank you. Motion's been made to cancel the public hearing scheduled for July the 16th. Is there any discussion to that motion? Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing's none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Now we'll go on to 5.4.1. Welcome, Bowen.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve and council. So this is a RFD for Weed and Pest Inspector and Soil Conservation Officer appointment. In compliance with the ASB Act, Weed Control and Pest Control Act, and Soil Conservation Act, we're required, under provincial law, to appoint these positions as noted below with the excerpts out of the acts. So we're looking to then appoint Michelle Hoppins as our Weed and Pest Inspector and Soil Conservation Officer for Neheal County for the term of her employment with us.
Any questions? Comments? Concerns? Motions forthcoming? Counselor King?
I think I remember Bowen promising there would be no more of these, but however, I understand things change, and so I would make the motion that council appoints for the term of her employment, Michelle Hoppins, with Neheal County, as a Weed and Pest Inspector and a Soil Conservation Officer, as per the Alberta Weed Control Act, Agriculture Pest Act, and the Soil Conservation Act.
Okay, motion's been made. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing's none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve and council.
Okay, I guess we will go on to our corporate services. Welcome, Will.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Reeve and council. I have the bank reconciliation RFD here for January to March of 2019, and the bank reconciliation has been completed for the period indicated, and as of March 31st, 2019, we continue to have $32 million in our GICs, and the detailed report is in the attachment. Those GICs are renewing during the year, and the last one is gonna be in September. And then typically after that, when the taxes come in, we reassess our cash flow projections and then reinvest as we see fit. This is just for council information and directive decision, and if you have any questions, let me know.
Does council have any questions for Mr. Wolf?
Mr. Reeve, I guess I was going to ask, we've had this report for quite a while, and just wanted to check in with you guys if this is a valuable report to you guys. We present this to kind of show our cash status, and just to give you guys assurance that we're...
It's not going home in your trunk. I think it's valuable for us to see. Appreciate the work involved.
Thank you.
What's council's wishes? Counselor McGee?
I move to receive January to March 2019 bank reconciliation for information as presented.
Okay, motion's been made to receive for information. All those in favor? Carried unanimously. Anytime you're ready, Mr. Wolf.
Okay, the quarterly financial report comes next here, and essentially I got some high-level notes that are accompanying these reports, and I'll just lay out the different reports that are included in here. There's the operating summary, there's the operating by department, we have a project summary, a grant schedule, and a reserve schedule. I'm not intending to go through each detailed line, but I trust that everything's been reviewed as much as you guys want it to. A couple of high-level notes. At this stage of the game, at March 31st, we're just starting the year, but the overall revenue is only at the 3.75% of our budgeted amount, and of course, this is due largely because the property tax revenue hasn't been posted yet. We didn't do that until May. Expenses are fairly well in line at 20.12%, and essentially, we've been processing all the budget funding until March, and the non-TCA and TCA projects are funded accordingly. The page one on page 76 in the package just shows a net gravel expense of $1,314 to date. So just getting started.
Counselor Christie.
I'll make a motion to receive the January to March 2019 financial reports for information as presented.
Motion's been made to receive for information. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing's none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried. Okay, we'll go on to 6.3. Project and capital budget report, and anytime you're ready, Will.
All right, thank you. The 2019 project and capital budget report, council had passed the capital and budget project in April of 2019, and as is council's role in governance, is to ensure stewardship over these entrusted resources. This particular report was based on the last information we cut off on, which was June the 12th. And just on a side note, I know Lori Watt did a good job here of going through municipal services summary, and some of this stuff is just the financial side of that. The more significant high-level notes here for the actual costs incurred to date under the gravel acquisition projects were at $422,000, and that's the project that carried forward from 2018 into 2019. The non-TCA projects, $152,000. There was a 2019 shoulder pull program project, and a 2018 carry-forward shoulder pull program that are showing there in the neighborhood of $50,000, and the invoices haven't quite caught up to the work, because there is more invoices to be posted for sure. Asset management plan, it's got $32,000. And then in the TCA projects, we're at $765,408, $381,000 being transferred to reserves, $199,000 for the Churchill rehabilitation, $122,000 for the SCBA gear, $19,000 for the Sharples Road project. In the capital equipment projects, we are at $2,085,536, and there are 13 projects that are complete, and the assets are in use, and of note, four fire trucks are ordered. In the capital sales, there's $379,464. I should note of that, $240,000 was an insurance payment for a fire truck, and most of the other items will be sold in the fall, as is typical. Some of the transfers that are listed as projects are complete, the water service area contribution for $1,435,513, and the capital equipment plan contributions of $1,953,719.
Are there any questions for Mr. Wolf?
So just a question with relation to the insurance payment on the fire truck. So we've received part of that, is that my understanding? Or have we received it all?
Through the chair, Mr. King, yes, we have received part of it, and there's an additional amount of, I believe, $50,000 that's contingent on part of the whole process in us replacing the engine.
So just as a follow-up then, so once the new engine's in place, then the full payout comes from the insurance. We have received an interim payment to this point, correct?
That is correct, yep.
I'll move to approve the capital project expenditure reports as of June 12th, 2019.
Thank you. Motion's been made to accept for information. Or no, accept to approve? Yep. Any discussion to that motion? Seeing's none, I will call the question, and the question is to approve the capital project expenditure, expenditure report as of June 12th, 2019. All those in favor? And that is carried. Okay, 6.4. Welcome back, Will.
Thank you again. This is the annual tax cancellation RFD, and it does have some history. Each year, the county has taxes that require cancellation, and it's based on agreements and/or a policy. Pursuant to the Municipal Government Act, Section 347.1, which states, "If the council considers it equitable to do so, it may generally, or with respect to a particular taxable property or business, or a class of taxable property or business, do one or more of the following with or without conditions. A, cancel or reduce tax arrears. B, cancel or refund all or a part of a tax. And C, defer the collection of a tax." These tax cancellations require an annual motion for approval. A little bit more background here, in June of 2016, council approved Policy 1615, which gave a direction to cancel taxes to the gas coops operating within Neheal County. For 2019, the list includes the rules as noted within the RFD, and the total of that amounts to $3,420.36. I should note that $539.85 of that total levy are requisitions that will be paid to the applicable parties, even if the taxes are canceled. Also, there's a note of change from prior year, that one of the sites that has been inactivated and is no longer being assessed or taxed. Lastly, I guess for some additional information, the properties in this RFD have industrial assessment, as the Municipal Government Act provides an exception to assess linear property on rural gas distribution. The Municipal Government Act, Section 2D111, states, "No assessment is to be prepared for the following," and there's a bunch of subsections, and subsections are, refers to these particular gas lines in question. And essentially, what that's referring to is that the pipes in the ground are not assessable and are not taxed by the municipality. The total cost from this tax cancellation is $3,420.36, and we do have a 2019 budget of $800,000 in the tax cancellation doubtful account. This would be a directive decision from council, and we would be forwarding letters out to the affected ratepayers to advise of council's decision.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. So the education portion, we would still have to cover through the county.
That is correct, Mr. Reeve.
Which amounts to $518.21.
That's right.
Counselor McGee? Hit it harder.
There we go. I'll make the motion to cancel taxes for the parcels as per the MGA and policy authority as listed.
Okay, so the motion's been made to approve the cancellation of taxes in the total amount of $3,420.36 to the gas coops on the owned properties as listed. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing's none, I will call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. It is 9:20, and we have a delegation scheduled for 9:30, so I will call a recess till 9:30. a recess till nine thirty. And we will move on to three point one, delegation, Stars Foundation. Glenda, anytime you're ready.
Okay, great.
Great to be here. I think what we'll do is we'll start with introductions, if that's fine.
Sure.
So from my far right.
I guess I'm on the far right today, so.
Okay.
I'm Ken King, I'm councillor for the northeast part of Neale County.
Jim Hugo for Three Hills and East.
Wade Christie, and I'm on the northwest corner.
Welcome, Glenda. Jerry Whitstock, and my, it was my far right, is where we were starting, so, just to clear up any confusion. Whoa, these mics are working like a damn.
Good morning, I'm Faye McGee, Division One.
Glenn Keever. Straight west of town.
Frequent flyer.
And Debbie Cannon.
Yes, that's right.
And our C A O.
Morning, Glenda.
Morning.
Chief Administrative Officer.
That's wonderful. I, we know each other from past in working together for several years, so it's so nice to see all familiar faces. So, and I'm Glenda Farnin, the Senior Municipal Relations Liaison for Stars. So I work with all of the municipal councils across Alberta and into B C.
Well, great to have you here.
Thank you. I'm so pleased to bring you your annual update, and to, once again, formally thank you for your continued support of Stars. Together, we are life-saving partners, and we're doing this for all of us today and for the future. So we'll just get started right away. There's been lots of changes, you know, happening for Stars. Stars is now going to be approaching thirty-five years of serving Albertans. And with that fact, you know, there's been a lot of innovation and lots of changes, and still yet more to come. But it's always really important to remember where we came from. So this is Dr. Powell, the actual, original founder of Stars. He was the chief of emergency medicine back in the nineteen eighties at the Foothills Medical Centre in Calgary. He came across studies that showed that here in Alberta, we had fifty percent higher trauma-related deaths than in any other province in Canada. Well, this greatly disturbed him as a critical care physician. And he set out to find a way to start saving lives in Alberta. He partnered with some of his colleagues, and together with a few businessmen that he knew, they approached the Lions of Alberta Foundation, who actually provided significant funding to lease a helicopter, the one you see there. And so, with him and his colleagues trading off, volunteering their time when they were not on shift at the hospital, they, that's how we began, with a bare-bones helicopter, a few physicians and nurses in the back of a helicopter with a doctor bag of, you know, things to help, and just bringing that critical care expertise to rural residents. So we were originally named Lions Air Ambulance Service. And then the fateful day came on December first, nineteen eighty-five, for Stars' first mission for this young lady, Kelly Waldron, who at that time was a critically ill newborn in southern rural Alberta. Little did any of us know that on that fateful day, and with that particular mission, how that was going to radically change, how critical care would begin to be delivered to rural residents. The year to follow, the day that we flew that little baby, we flew about fifty missions that year. Last fiscal year, we flew one shy of three thousand missions, quite a radical change over the last thirty-four years. Today, we are under the leadership of Andrea Robertson. We have now grown and expanded to six bases across three provinces, serving four provinces across western Canada. We have three provincial government affiliation agreements in place. We average eight missions per day. Five of those eight missions per day are in Alberta alone. Eleven helicopters in the current fleet, and we recently surpassed forty thousand missions flown since that first day we flew that little baby. Critical care training is a part of everything that we do at Stars. It is mandatory for our crews. We recreate actual trauma cases that we have seen and put all of our crew members to the paces using that human patient simulator. We also take that one step further with that mobile education unit that we have, and bring it to the communities, so that we can spend an entire day with your physicians and nurses, and put them through the paces as well. Being able to bring critical care training to the rural communities is so vital, in the fact that, you know, your physicians and nurses can't leave your community defenseless to go away for training. So we can come and spend an entire day with them. And actually, you know, they can request different areas of expertise that they would like to be, have, you know, a training on. So that's an important piece as well. If you see a lot of sepsis, or heart attack, or stroke in your areas, those are usually the, the factors of where, you know, what they would like to hone in on as far as training. In addition to the critical care training for our crews, though, there is an international, world-class, critical care simulation competition. And Stars crew members, we always have our own internal competition that allows all of our crew members to compete against each other, because only two people per year are allowed to go and represent Stars internationally. We have competed in this particular competition for sixteen years now, and Stars crews have placed in the top three every single year we have ever competed. In addition, we brought the cup home first place six times, and did so again last year. In October, we brought the cup home first place. So when we work together with your local chain of survival partners, we are bringing world-class critical care to rural residents. Not much has changed on this. The slide I bring to you every year, on the expenditure side, everything's still pretty much status quo. On the, on the right-hand side, expenditures, two-thirds of the pie continue to be aviation and medical components. Smaller pieces are the base operations and dispatch and coordination, and we still remain at fifteen percent for administration costs. CRA allows up to thirty-five percent, so we're pretty proud of the fact that we try our very best to keep that in check. On the funding side, the twenty percent still remains the Alberta Health Services government funding we receive. So these are in thousands, so just over seven million dollars per year, block funding. That affiliation agreement with Alberta Health Services is in place until twenty twenty. So we are currently at very high-level discussions now on where we're hopeful that we can go in whether or not we can, and look for, you know, further support from the government. In the meantime, while that agreement is in place, we still have to find eighty percent fundraising. Of that eighty percent, about half of that is generated from the Stars lottery, the calendar campaign, and the site registration program. All have been down the last few years. Lottery, the last two years, or the first two years ever in twenty-five years, that we did not have a sellout, so that kind of hurt us a bit. Calendar campaign, like, you know, people keep saying that eventually calendars will probably be phased out, people don't really use them anymore. But so far, like, Stars' calendar has been kind of holding its own, generating just over a million dollars per year. So that's, you know, something people still want to support, and they want to read patient stories. Site registration program as well has been down, but then oil and gas sector has really suffered the last few years. A lot of challenges there, so, you know, they haven't had as many sites to be registered. many sites to be registered, they haven't been as busy in the field, so we're very hopeful that that's up and coming. In the meantime, with all of those fundraising campaigns, it still leaves roughly $17 million a year that has to be generated from the corporate sector, from our municipalities that support us, like yourselves, as well as community events and service clubs. All of those factors go into generating $17 million a year. For Neale County, this is up to May 31st of this year, so just giving you kind of an idea. You know, you've been fairly consistent the last couple of years, been a few more missions, but you have a very busy hospital at Three Hills Hospital, so, you know, had some critical care transfers where, you know, Stars has been called in to, that these patients need to go to a higher level of care, and that they are critical. You've already had four missions this year as well in different areas. So if we took an overall average across these last five years, not including this year, just to see what is an annual average for your, for your county and area, it would be about 14 missions per year within Neale County and Three Hills itself. So based on that, you know, like, we all travel, we all commute to neighboring municipalities, and they all come through Neale County as well. It's really important that the municipal initiative that you're a part of, it's a united effort that we continue to work together to have Stars in Alberta. So based on 14 missions per year, it represents roughly $100,000 in service value from Stars to your residents and area, and also to your neighbors. You know, we have deliberated for the past 10 years as when would the fateful day come that we would finally have to start looking at fleet replacement. The BK-117s that we have are all approaching 35 years old. And last year, we had some major challenges in the fact that we've become well aware that BK-117s have been phased out of production, they are no longer making parts, and we had one backup helicopter down for many months waiting for a part. So that day is here. And so we, that was a decision to, number one, we will go back to our roots, we will go back to one platform, meaning only one kind of helicopter. We can save hundreds of thousands of dollars by not having two different types of helicopters, two certifications, two licensings, two trainings, two different, like, the list just goes on and on and on. So we will return to our roots. And it's decided that we would go with the Airbus H145. It is the big sister to the BK-117 that's served us well for 30, almost 35 years now. So we're going to, we'd used some cash reserves in the beginning to purchase the first three, plus we use financing, because we know, in no way want to jeopardize operations. And I have to make sure that, you know, we're always ready for anything unforeseen. And so it is decided that we would downsize a bit, and starting with a goal of nine helicopters in total for the entire fleet across the three provinces. Five in Alberta, three in Saskatchewan, one in Manitoba. So for Alberta, that means one at every base, Edmonton, Calgary, and Grand Prairie, and two backups to be rotated between the three bases. Same for Saskatchewan, and Saskatchewan has one backup that will be shared with the one in Manitoba in Winnipeg, for, you know, anything unforeseen or scheduled maintenance. So in total, like, all monies generated from government support, municipal government, community, individuals, will all be separate per province. So we basically would be reaching out to all Albertans to help us in generating funds for five helicopters in Alberta. These come at a cost of $13 million per helicopter. So basically, we are facing a $117 million capital campaign, keeping in mind that we also have to still generate the money that we have to for daily operations. In the meantime, in December of last year, the future all of a sudden became so much brighter. Saskatchewan government announced not only that they would sign a 10-year agreement with Stars at 50% government funding, but they would also pay for one helicopter in Saskatchewan. So Saskatchewan was well on its way for the three that it needs. Alberta, then, in March of this year, Alberta Health Services announced that they would also pay for one helicopter in Alberta, keeping in mind that the affiliation agreement's still in place till 2020. And then the federal government, like, we have appealed to the government over many years, but we have always been recognized as a provincial service, so we have never received that kind of support. This year, now that we are serving western Canada, the federal government came through with a grant for 20, for $65 million for five helicopters across western Canada. So we now have monies for seven, and what was a $117 million capital campaign has been reduced to a $26 million capital campaign for the remaining two. So all in all, the future is looking much brighter, not only for us as we look forward to the next 35, 40 years of service, but for our children and our grandchildren. So I want to thank you again so much. You've been a valued partner of the, part of the municipal initiative since 2012. We really appreciate your commitment to safety and to excellence in critical care for your residents, as well as for your neighbors in your area. It is a partnership, it's a life-saving partnership. We appreciate your five-year pledge that's going through 2020. Together, we have seen positive results, we have seen lives saved, but we must also work together now more than ever to sustain operations and to build Stars so that we can protect and preserve Stars for our future generations. And I thank you.
Thank you, Glenda. Does council have any questions? Comments? Okay.
Just curious, when it first started, the medical staff volunteered, does it still volunteer, or what do they do there?
No, it's no longer volunteer as far as medical staff. We still have lots of volunteers that help us with community events and that type of thing, but all of the operations is paid staff. It's very difficult to, to go from 50 missions a year to 3,000 on volunteer basis.
Counselor Penner.
In the east country, there's HALO. Do you guys work together, or how does that work?
There's been a lot of discussion about HALO lately, and I am working with a lot of the southern municipalities as well. HALO is very, you know, they are co-located in an area that it's much further for us to get to currently from Calgary, because, you know, we have to travel from Calgary to get into that Medicine Hat area. We have, we can reach it, but we would have to refuel in order to be able to make it back, you know, to Calgary as well. So it's kind of out of the unrefueled area, but it's certainly not meaning that we can't fly there. In the north, out of the Grand Prairie base, like, we're doing missions to Fox Lake, which is right at the Northwest Territories border, and into Fort Nelson if needed. So it's just a matter of timing and being able to get fuel. In the meantime, the last few years now, it's been incorporated through the emergency services system, so there isn't an entity like HALO in Fort, Fort McMurray. So we dispatch both now. So they are under the umbrella of Stars Emergency Link Center, in fact, that we still have, the Stars transport physicians have all of the medical oversight for any critical patient. So regardless of how that patient may end up going, by fixed wing, ground ambulance, combination of HALO, maybe HALO and Stars rendezvous, lots of different combinations, but the Stars transport physicians have all of the medical oversight. So we dispatch Phoenix out of Fort McMurray, and we dispatch HALO.
Another question, sorry.
Sure.
Now that you have three in operation, in Saskatchewan, do they come into Alberta too, or is, they got to stop, like?
No, we, the same as on the B C border, like, we serve, you know, all of northeastern B C, and we work together with them as partners. They are also municipal initiative partners to the tune of the fact that they have now surpassed over $1 million in giving. So they recognize that Stars is the only, only kind of emergency services helicopter EMS available to them. So the same for Saskatchewan. We have done missions, especially more in the Lloydminster area, where Saskatchewan has responded and, you know, brought some patients over, or vice versa, out of Edmonton going into Saskatchewan. So there is that connection as well of being able to, for those bordering areas to kind of have service from two different bases.
Thank you, just good to know. I spent a bit, part of my time at the border, so.
Well, I think, you know, it's, it's really important to know, I, I had a councillor recently that said that, you know, they, they've always been there as a council, very supportive of Stars and going forward, and they always were basically, you know, in their minds doing it for their residents, you know, to make sure that we continue to have it. But she said it really came full circle for her, and when she told a story about how her and her family were on a holiday in southeastern B C, and her little boy had an incident, and Stars needed to be called in, and he had to be flown to Children's Hospital. And she said then it became full circle, and the picture was much bigger picture in the fact it's not just for at home and your immediate area. It's across western Canada now, and that's the bigger picture of our partnership. If you were to go to visit family in Winnipeg, and someone has a stroke or a heart attack, you still have access to Stars, and no cost to you. That's the bigger picture. Wherever we go, now we have that.
Is there any other questions for Glenda from council? Well, looks like we've covered it all.
Thank you so much.
Well, thank you very much, Glenda, for your presentation.
Yes.
Thank you very much for the important work that you and Stars do. I don't necessarily love seeing that red helicopter flying in the air above me, but I'm very grateful that we have that option, and I'm very grateful that it's out there to help protect our residents in Neale County and the municipalities within.
Absolutely.
I'm a supporter of not rioting, thanks.
No, I totally agree, I totally agree. But at the same time, you know, it is a life-saving partnership that, after the last 34 years, like, we cannot ever take that for granted, what we have achieved together.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Oh, well, thanks for coming.
I look forward to it. Have everyone have a wonderful summer, and I look forward to seeing you again. And you as well, Mike.[1348.53][1348.53](Laughter).
Okay. We have a public hearing coming up at 10:00, so I will recess council until 10 o'clock. Thanks, Glenda. We have recessed the meeting. Prior to this, I shall now call for a motion that the public hearing for bylaw 1797 be opened. Does somebody like to make the motion?
Counselor King. I'd make that motion.
Okay. Motion's been made to go into public hearing at 10:00 a.m. All those in favor? And that is carried. I have some housekeeping items that I'm going to deal with right now. If there's any persons interested in speaking for, excuse me, or against the proposed bylaw and haven't done so already, should register their names on the appropriate speakers list, so your names may be correctly recorded in the minutes. If you have not already done so, please see Jenna Kester in the lobby to register your name on this list. The use of audio. The use of audio and video recording devices and cameras by the press or the public is prohibited. I would like now to introduce the council at this point in time, starting from my far right.
Good morning, I'm Ken King.
Morning, I'm Jim Heavill.
Wade Christie.
Jerry Whitstock.
Fairwick, McGee, I'm Sid Stock.
Glenn Keever.
Debbie Cannon.
Mike Hogan, Chief Administrative Officer.
All right, I will now outline the meeting process. Individuals speaking for or against the proposed bylaw today will be allowed five minutes to speak. A spokesman speaking on behalf of a group petition may speak for a maximum of 10 minutes. We have a time clock that will be displayed on the screen. At two minutes, it'll turn yellow; at one minute, it'll turn red; and when the clock hits zero, there will be a five-second warning that your speaking time is complete. All questions to council will be directed to myself as chairman, and I will direct the questions to the person best suited to answer. No questions will be taken from the gallery; no debate will be allowed. When presenting, speakers shall state their name and address. If you have already submitted a letter on or before the advertised deadline, you may only address council at this hearing on new information not contained in your letter. Any person who would like to present using an electronic presentation will bring their USB flash drive to the presenter's desk, where a staff member will open the file at the presenter's laptop. The order of presentations to be made to council today will be, firstly, administration will present an overview and summary regarding the proposed bylaw; secondly, the applicant shall state their name and present their application within a time period of 20 minutes; third, a municipal member of council can ask questions of clarification to the applicant; fourthly, the chair shall open the floor to presentations from the public who are in favor of the proposed bylaw. The order for these presentations will be in the following. Administration will come forward and read their written submissions. Individuals will be called in the order as they appear on the individual speakers list. Group speakers will be called in the order as they appear on the group speakers list. Fifthly, the chair shall open the floor to presentations from the public who are in opposition to the proposed bylaw. The order for these presentations will be the following. Administration will come forward and read the written submissions. Individuals will be called in the order as they appear on the individual speakers list. Group speakers will be called in the order as they appear on the group speakers list. Council members are allowed to ask questions of clarification to the individual slash group speaking to the proposed bylaw. Sixth, after hearing from those persons on the speakers list in support or opposition, I will ask anyone present wishes to speak in support or opposition to the proposed bylaw. Seventh, the applicant will get a chance for rebuttal, which will be no longer than 10 minutes. Eighth, we will allow questions for clarification from council members to the applicant. And I did all that. Okay, now we will ask our planning and development department to come forward and make their application. Welcome, Herb.
Good morning. We've got a presentation for you today regarding the intermunicipal development plan between Neill County and the town of Troschu. As per requirements in the Municipal Government Act, it was advertised as is legislated, so you will note the dates, and it was on the website, and then we do also notify all the adjacent landowners by mail. In the spring of 2018, amendments to the Municipal Government Act came into effect, including the amendment that all municipalities who share a boundary, they have to work together to adopt an intermunicipal development plan. The purpose of this was really to drive a collaborative planning approach to lands along the common borders between the two municipalities, and this will ensure that certain identified areas are viewed with a regional perspective. By implementing a plan that contains both guidelines for future uses as well as agreed dispute mechanisms, urban and rural municipalities can reach agreement without negative impacts on either municipality. From the perspective of both municipalities, enhanced management of the land within the IDP area identified will prove advantageous for the long-term interests of the municipalities and their residents. So, as you can see, it was legislated, so we do have quite a number of these to do. We are looking at likely 13 of them. So, in the new Municipal Government Act, what these plans must address is future land use, future development, transportation systems, the intermunicipal infrastructure, any intermunicipal programs that might relate to physical, social, economic development in the area, environmental matters, intermunicipal services and facilities, and any other matter related to the physical, social, or economic development that council would consider necessary. And just a reminder again, we are only talking about borderlands, so on both sides of the border in the area, in this case specifically to Troschu and Neill. The plan also has to address conflict resolution, and a procedure that we go through to amend the plan, to make it better. These are living plans, living documents, so we do expect that they will change over time, as development pressures might change. And then there's also provisions for relating to the administration of these plans. Some of the mutual objectives specific to this plan is to provide that framework for collaboration when developing these lands within the IDP area. It's also to promote more open communication between the town, county, and the public and interested stakeholders, so when applications come in, we have a little bit different process, which we'll talk about in a bit. It promotes respect for each other's jurisdictional autonomy and integrity. Again, there is, um, everyone still makes decisions on lands within their borders, but we just have more stakeholders now. It also provides framework for the provision of services and infrastructure required for joint planning in the area, and it demonstrates an equitable, efficient, and proactive approach to that. And then it also is a guide to collaboratively plan for lands within these areas that will promote opportunities for residential, commercial, industrial, and economic development while minimizing land use and environmental impacts. Purpose and guiding principles, again, specific to Troschu, they're not all identical, but they would be similar. Mutual respect and equity, cooperation, collaboration, communication and trust, coordinated, consistent, and timely response, respect for environment and natural capital, public engagement and consultation, and economic growth and development. So those are all some of the guiding principles within the planned area. So, when it comes to managing growth, the IDP goal is to really facilitate that orderly and efficient, environmentally sound development that is compatible with the planned area while minimizing conflicts that could be potential between ag and urban land uses. The natural environment surrounding the town does not respect municipal boundaries. Both municipalities have to recognize that there is value to that natural environment, and they have, within this plan, and its contribution to the quality of life. So there are areas that fall both within Troschu boundary as well as Neill County in these borderlands that would be more challenging to develop for sure because of the environmental footprint. Transportation, and it is really to recognize the importance of establishing and creating that continuous network of roads within the planned area, and again, if there's areas to be developed that aren't already created with a road network, it would be how do we connect these things as we develop? So it would be looking at those big-picture things between the two municipalities. Economic and joint development. So planning future growth may raise opportunities for mutually beneficial economic development and joint development opportunities. So again, it goes both ways. Both sides could trigger growth or development on the other side. Agricultural uses. The majority of the land that falls within Neill County, which are the borderlands around, are agricultural in nature, so it really strives to maintain the importance of agriculture by directing future growth in a compact or more contiguous manner that minimizes some of those intrusions. And then there's also residential uses, which we will see in the map as Zone 1, and those are uses that will be cited to reduce conflicts between residential and non-residential land uses. So a balanced range of housing opportunities compatible with market preferences will be encouraged, and then again, considering the needs of the existing and the proposed adjacent land uses. And then commercial and industrial uses, which are Zone 2, and again, we will talk about those a little bit more. Promoting a well-planned commercial and industrial development will support the creation of strong diversified economy. Both municipalities shall work together to maximize the advantages of commercial and industrial opportunities potentially offered by visibility from highways 21 and 585. So when we're talking about the designated zones, the lands that are highlighted in pink or yellow are the lands that fall within the IDP area, so these are the specific lands we're in conversation about today and what the plan applies to. So anything that you see highlighted in yellow has been considered as more of a residential area for growth. I will say that these maps were all, how this happens is, we sit down with the administration from Troschu, and we discuss these maps, and we've highlighted them based on the conversation and consensus between the two municipalities, and then it has gone further to a committee to look at between councilors with the CAOs. So that conversation was had, and there were a few tweaks that were made following some of that, and then what you see now is the draft map that has been circulated for public comment. The other thing in the intermunicipal zones that we need to talk about with Troschu specifically is we do have an environmentally significant area, and we saw some of that in the pictures. So what you see highlighted in green is, has been flagged as an environmentally significant area or sensitive area, so those are lands that were development to occur. More, more, uh, things would be necessary for a developer to try to put something within those lands, especially if it was more of the commercial-industrial. So some of the considerations that we look at when we're doing the intermunicipal zone are areas that are shown on the map. They are not automatic approval of use, so even though they've been flagged as more residential or more commercial in nature, or that ability to go that way, it's not automatically set to be that way. This is not rezoning of any of these lands. All they are is highlighted because they're in that planned area, and applications for any use would be landowner-driven. This is not where a municipality would potentially go forward and say, "We're taking these lands for these purposes." It's really, if a landowner that owns it wants to continue farming forever, they get to continue farming forever. So any of these uses would be landowner-driven, and all those applications have to be assessed on a case-by-case basis, and they would be assessed based on whatever jurisdiction they fall into, and then the other municipality is, actually becomes a stakeholder. So we've put in a satellite image here so that you can see, uh, it gives you an idea, and you can very readily see that environmentally sensitive area that runs through that southern portion there, and you will also see the ag land around, and kinda where the lot development falls within Troschu. The orange dotted line is the outline of current boundary for Troschu, so that gives you an idea. So there is some farmland within the Troschu boundary, but very minimal as opposed to Neill County, so. And then we've just done a bit of a zoom in so that you can see a little bit more of that environmentally significant area and how that falls in those lands. So as we've talked about, the committee was formed, so the plan is ongoing. It is, as we said, that living document. It can be changed at any point in time, but there is a process to do that, and that process would always involve that public hearing and adjacent landowner opportunity to provide comments. So it needs to, uh, this plan needs to be applicable, so as we see development pressures move or shift between either Troschu or Neill County, this plan may come back to the table at some point. However, we do put a formal review process every three years into this plan, so they will come back to that committee level to go through, and at that point in time, administration on either side can make recommendations as to tweaks that may need to happen. The committee that is established is an even number of members from council from both the town and the county, and they are appointed at the organizational meetings of both of those municipalities in their fall organizational meetings. So, again, the membership could change, but right now, uh, we've, we've got a committee in place. So the committee is really a forum for dialogue on issues of common interest and concern, and so they would address any proposed amendments. If there's conflicts about proposed amendments, then the committee would be involved in that level as well, as well as the CAO. So we are looking to really be able to engage in resolving conflicts and doing that at a local level, and not having to go further. The committee, however, is not a decision-making body. They provide comments and recommendations back to the appropriate decision-making body, which in both cases would be the council. So, um, there is an order that we would look at for dispute resolution, and so that is CAO to CAO first, uh, and they would attempt to resolve anything that came up, so, um, that would be the first point of contact, and if that doesn't work, then it would go committee to committee to attempt to resolve, and then only if at that point it doesn't work, mediation. And that can only be initiated by the town or county council. This is not something where the CAO can do it, or ratepayer can decide they wanna push mediation. This is a council decision. And then if that fails, then the municipal government board can step in. So the bylaw, if there's changes, so for example, if somebody was going to apply to do something on, in that planned area, and the other municipality was not on board with that, and in fact had a fair number of concerns, uh, if all these options did not work, then the bylaw could be adopted, and then the municipality that does have the concerns could take that to the municipal government board for decision. So that's kind of how that process works, and again, those processes are all outside of this, and those are very legal legislative processes that would fall out of our arena at that point in time. So, again, really important points to remember is, both the town and county maintain jurisdiction over the decisions made within their borders, so it doesn't change, uh, who's the deciding factor here. Applications are evaluated against each municipality's municipal development plan as well as any statutory and non-statutory plans, and one of the requirements of any IDP and all of our statutory plans is they're all consistent. So they do have to talk to each other, so if there is issues between plans, the higher plan takes precedent, but it is something that we have to consider, both jurisdictions have to consider, when we're creating these intermunicipal development plans, that they in fact do speak with our municipal development plan, and if not, we do need to amend our municipal development plans and all of our statutory and non-statutory plans, because we do have to be consistent, and that's legislated to be that way. Notifications are done by both the town and the county for applications received in the subject lands. That part doesn't, hasn't changed. We still notify, we do notify adjacent landowners if there's discretionary use or rezoning applications. Always adjacent landowners get notified. That is legislated in the Municipal Government Act. But now we have one other party, so that is, the town on our side gets a notice if we are doing anything in that planned area, and if the town is doing something in the planned area as a county, we now become an effective party and we can provide comment. So that is really the big difference, is now as a municipality, you have a little bit more say in some of these. So, and also, the town and county both agree to share ownership information, so again, if we have to mail to adjacent landowners, and we have done this in the past, it's worked well, many municipalities, we share back and forth to each other for this purpose. So if we do need to notify residents within the town of Troschu, they provide us the information that we can send those notifications out, so no one's missed, and same with us. If they are doing something, we provide those mailing addresses for them for that purpose. So again, we want to talk about that urban fringe and the interface area, so the residential uses in particular, and then there's areas where different, and land use meets and, meets and interact, and so each municipality is really gonna ensure future land use designations and those interface areas are compatible. You will see along highways typically, you will see more pressure for commercial or industrial, and you also have residential along those highways. So it's very critical that when those things are coming into play, that there are appropriate buffers, or screening, or whatever has to happen to protect the residential uses, and so that's part of what this plan will help do, because, as I said, we do see those pressures tend to be more along the highways. And then we're also looking, uh, where land that would best accommodate future residential development through areas along Highway 21 could also support commercial, and that's, again, as we've, we've seen. So even though it might be highlighted for yellow, if the landowner decides that there would be a commercial or retail use that would work very well there, again, that could be considered because of location and, as long as we are protecting whatever's existing uses are there. I think that's, you know, this one? And then the future land use concept areas are the lands that are zoned as Level 2, so those are the pink lands, and they are areas, again, where different land uses can meet. These lands serve as a guide for more of the future commercial and industrial due to the proximity, and again, we talked about that on the last slide. However, if somebody came forward with a residential development, it could potentially be considered. So as we said, these are not rezoned, this is not anything in cement as far as what uses could be, it's still landowner-driven, but this is where, as- But this is where as a council met makes the most sense to, to put some of these things based on what's already existing. And I will highlight, there is one quarter and we, and I will highlight that because there was a conversation between the town of Troschu and us. So the southwest corner is land that is remained white. So it's not part of the planned area. And the reason that land is, has remained outside of the planned area is because it's where that creek bottom runs, would be very difficult to develop and there's no access to those lands. You have to actually access through the quarter further west. So those lands have remained out because they are challenged to themselves. So we've left them out of the planned area, but we would still do the notifications as required if anybody came forward with discretionary or a rezoning. So adjacent landowners would still get notified. Process to date and going forward. So as we've said, two members from each council, along with the CAOs from each municipality, appointed a committee to review. They did review these documents and, and that was completed and some minor amendments were made. Town of Troschu already held their public hearing, June 10th, and they did do second and third reading. So their bylaw on their side has been approved. Our public hearing was scheduled for today. And so again, council can consider second and third reading at this, today later, or it can be deferred to a following meeting, whatever council considers. And then once that second and third reading has happened, then the bylaw has been adopted and we have an intermunicipal development plan. And we did not get any letters of comment either way.
Okay, thanks Barb. Are there any questions for the planner from council? Councillor McGee?
I'm very special, sorry. Barb, on your second to last slide where you had the map in the little corner there, I noticed that you have some yellow highlighted there in the, in the northeast corners, whereas the map that was printed for us, it's all pink. I wanted to be sure we have on record which one's accurate.
Okay. This should be, oh, this, the, the one you have is accurate. The one in the, because there were some minor amendments. So I apologize because I obviously did this presentation a little before. So there is a little bit of amendment. So along these lands here, there was some amendment that only the north portion of this was pink and the south was yellow. And then this one is split as well. So the east half would be yellow and the west half would be pink. My apologies. So what you have in your package should be correct and the most up to date.
So that would mean that the far northeast corner as well, the top yellow is actually pink on ours?
Yes, and that was changed regarding conversation with the town of Troschu.
Thank you.
And there is development up there and that's why, because there is a poultry barn in there. So that's why they've changed that. So what you have, this one that you have in your package is correct. So my fault, sorry.
Are there any other questions for the planner from council? I guess I don't really have a question, it's more of a comment. I do realize that there is quite a bit of environmentally significant areas in the map, but that does not mean that there cannot be development there.
Correct.
It'll just be restricted to what can happen there and what's appropriate or what people feel that is appropriate.
Correct. And appropriate reports would have to follow or be provided depending on what it was. So, and just to clarify, in our municipal development plan and land use bylaw, if it's a residence or a garage, like a farmyard, we have classed that as very low footprint impact. However, we would not let you build in the floodplain. So we would have to have informations from likely a surveyor or somebody, biologists that would come out and say, you're elevated enough above the floodplain. So those are things that would all be considered based on whatever the application stated and whether or not, and you may have to have some geotechnical work if you're close to the edges of anything. And we require that for anybody. If they want to build close to a brink, we say no. But if you choose to do that, then you have to show us that you are not going to fall to the bottom. So that's kind of how we deal with that. Anything bigger, industrial, commercial would definitely have more hoops to go through to develop anything in those lands. On the southeast portion of Troschu, there's a lot of country residential portion and a lot of acreages. So those lands are already residential in nature, so.
Okay, thank you. Well, if there's no more questions for the planner, okay, I'm going through this the way it's listed here, so.
Oh, absolutely.
Stay with me. I will now ask the applicant to come forward to make your presentation. We are the applicant. Does council have any questions for the applicant? Okay, I will now ask for administration to come forward and read written submissions that are in favor of the proposed bylaw. You've already stated there have.
There's none, yeah.
I will now call on individuals in order that they appear on the individual speakers list in favor of the bylaw to come forward and make your presentation. I will remind you, you have five minutes. I have the list next to me and there are no persons on that list. There are, I will now call on individuals speaking as a group in the order they appear on the list to come forward and make your presentations. I have no group people on the list. I will now call on administration to come forward and read the written submissions that are in opposition to the proposed bylaw.
There are none.
We have none. I will now call on individuals in the order that they appear on the individual speakers list in opposition to come forward to make your presentation. I have none on that list. I will now call on individuals in order that they appear on the group speakers list in opposition to the bylaw to come forward and make your presentation. And I also have none there. I will now ask one final time if there is anyone else present who wishes to speak in support or opposition of the proposed bylaw. Seeing's none. Does the applicant wish to offer rebuttal? I guess not. Does the council have any further app, questions? Seeing's none, I will now declare the public hearing closed and ask for a motion to go back into regular council meeting. Councillor Christie?
So moved.
Motion's been made to close the public hearing and go back in the regular council meeting. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Okay, well, thank you very much. And we will deal with this further on in our agenda. And getting back to our agenda, we will now go to eight point one in the new business. Mr. Hogan?
Thank you Reeve Whitstock. The item that's before you, we've received a quest from the village of Delburne to either donate a silent auction item or cash donation to the village of Delburne's 12th Annual Charity Golf Tournament, being held later in July. The back, some of the additional background on this, we've not donated to this, we didn't donate to this last year. If council chooses to, then just for, for knowledge, the proceeds from the event are going to the Delburne and District Golf and Recreation Society.
Thank you. What are council's wishes? Councillor King?
I'd make the motion that council receive for information the village of Delburne's 12th Annual Charity Golf Tournament request.
Okay, thank, thank you, Councillor King. Motion's been made to receive for information. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing's none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? That is carried. We will now go on to eight point two. Mr. Hogan?
This similar request item, the letter was received from the village of Linden inviting council to attend the annual fire and ambulance appreciation barbecue. The event will be held on Thursday, July 18th, 2019 at 6:00 PM. And the village of Linden is also requesting financial support for the barbecue. In the past, the county has provided a donation of $350 and authorized attendance for councils at the event.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. Council have any questions? Concerns, comments, motions? Councillor Penner?
I move that we approve a donation of $350 and authorize council to attend whoever's able to on July 18th at 6:00 PM.
Okay, thank you very much. We've got a motion before us. Any discussion to that motion? Seeing's none, I will call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? Carried. Okay, eight point three, Mr. Hogan again.
The, the item here is regarding the Carbon Skating Rink Grand Opening. Just simply asking, we've received an invitation for the Reeve to attend the skating rink grand opening to be held in Carbon on Saturday, December 7th at 5:00 PM. The village is able to make the celebration possible with grant funding from the federal gas tax grant and they're requesting an RSVP no later than September 30th. So we're quite a ways out from this. But if, if the Reeve or any member of council would like to attend, simply looking for you to authorize that attendance and we will RSVP you accordingly.
What are council's wishes? Or are there any questions? Councillor McGee?
I make the motion that we approve the attendance of the Reeve or alternate to the village of Carbon Skating Rink Grand Opening, taking place on December 7th, 19th at 5:00 PM.
Thank you, motion's been made. It's quite a ways out there. I don't even buy green bananas anymore, so we'll see how that turns out. All right, we have a motion before us. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing's none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? That is carried. Okay, eight point four. Mr. Hogan, again.
Regarding the intermunicipal development plan with Red Deer County and the appointment of committee members to, to the group that'll look after that, is administration has completed the draft of an intermunicipal development plan with Red Deer County. As per the proposed draft, the committee makeup will be the chief elected official plus two councils from each municipality. The CAOs from each municipality will also attend in an advisory capacity. So we're looking for council to appoint members to the committee to continue with the review process prior to the legislated processes. So similar to the public hearing we just had, we've got those, all those to go through as part of the ICFs. The common boundary between Red Deer County and Neheil County covers both divisions six and seven. As such, we're recommending that the councils from those wards, along with the Reeve, be appointed to the committee. This is administration's recommendation. Council is of course free to put whoever they, whomever they want to, to that committee. Red Deer County will host an open house on August 15th from 4:30 to 6:30 at the Neheil Valley Community Center located in Red Deer County to provide the public with consultative opportunities on the proposed plan. They've requested Neheil County committee members and administration be in attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. Are there any questions? Or what's council's wishes here? If we're good with the appointed members, we should probably have a volunteer for the alternate position. Mr. Hugo has volunteered for the alternate position. Councillor McGee?
I'd like to make the motion. I would like to make the motion that council point Reeve Whitstock, Councillor King, Councillor Christie to the Red Deer County and Neheil County Intermunicipal Development Plan Committee with Councillor Hugo as the alter, alternate.
Thank you, Councillor McGee. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing's none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried. We will now move on to eight point five, logo branding. Welcome Christine. And anytime you're ready, we look forward to your cheerful, cheerful report.
I'll try. I bring for you this morning a request for the Neheil County logo branding. At the May 21st, 2019 Committee of the Whole Meeting, council reviewed logo designs and directed administration to bring back a few more logo options, along with minor amendments to Neheil County's current logo for their consideration. Branding is the way we present ourselves to the public and our citizens. It is an all encompassing experience from logo design to messaging with consistent professional language. With the 75th anniversary of Neheil County on our doorstep, this is a great time to refresh the entire package with the rebrand of the organization. A logo, website, signage, corporate, stationary standards and advertisements. Should council choose three logos from the provided options, the public could be consulted in choosing one of the three to become Neheil County's official logo. Consultation could include webpage and survey and engagement at Neheil County's discovery fair. So we just have a bit of a presentation here. How do I make it work? Sorry. Sorry. Okay, could we just follow you? Could we just follow you? So we just wanted to talk a little bit about branding again and just review, review a bit about it. Every entity that interacts and communicates with the public needs a brand. But branding is not just a logo. Branding is the communication of our organization's values, beliefs and goals through consistent language and visuals. Our brand is our reputation. It's the way we present ourselves and it's an image created and reinforced, making us instantly recognizable by the public. Branding is especially crucial in government. Unlike the public sector, branding in government is not about selling, but about identifying Neheil County as a trusted, reliable source on behalf of the public. Repetitive, consistent use of colors, logos, tone and message help the public recognize who we are, what we do, and gives them confidence that we provide legitimate, valuable services. Branding keeps the organization on the same page. Effective brand management, otherwise known as the corporate identity, helps employees retain the purpose of the organization when communicating to both internal and external stakeholders, whether answering the phone, writing an email, going to a conference or doing day to day work. When communication is generated from the same source with the same language, tone, fonts, designs and standards, the constant reiteration of the same message establishes and builds trust with the public, which is crucial to every organization's success. So if we scroll down, this is our current look right now, that we're hoping to kind of refresh and just bring together and make it one cohesive package. And so moving on, these are the, the logo options that we had for council's consideration. So we enlisted the help of Moraine 3.14. They are the ones that brought us E1, which is just a variation of our current logo. They've removed border around the county and played with the font a little bit to make it easier to read. F1, F2 and F3 were designed in-house here. So again, modifications of our current logo. F3 played with the shape a little bit and then F2's got the stripes. The, the advantage to doing it in-house as well is we can modify them as we need for printing purposes. Onwards, we've got the options from Red Pine. So he, he took the previous concepts and then took, took council's comments and kind of altered them. So here he used a more modern font and alternate colors to kind of bring you those options there. On the next page, he took that logo, he positioned the icon to the left side, added a brown layer that you can see in B2 and took out the gray color on the font. And then on the third, this is actually a And then on the third, this is actually a new logo that we've brought. And his idea here is sun and sky with sunlit hills and prairie creek. So it's got the gradient color and a bit of the, the vibrant font as well. So over the weekend, we kind of polled counsel to see what their favorites were. And so, if you wouldn't mind bringing that up. The top choices were F3 and F1 with three votes each. And then the new, the new logo, C2, got two votes as well. And then all the other ones seen, seen there were picked once by everybody. Kind of gives us a starting off point? Yes, oh yeah, we were gonna choose three logos then for the public consultation. If counsel wishes.
Thanks, Christine. Are there any questions, comments? Are we happy with the logos? It's nice to see two of my three choices there. What do you mean he didn't get any? Should've read the email.
F3 and F1 are fairly similar, so we could go with maybe just one of those options if you wanted as well.
What's counsel's wishes here? Tough decision.
Yeah.
They're also good. Counsel Penner.
So going forward, you just want to take three. That just makes your job easier, is why we're doing that, not take five, or?
Want to make our job tougher. Count, yes, Mr. Hogan.
Through you, Mr. Chair. The, one of the, when we talked about this prior, one of the things that had been put out there for counsel, though there was no formal decision on that, is, was the idea that we would narrow these down to say three, although that is change, we can, we can deviate from that. But if there were three that, that counsel was comfortable with, we'd then put those out for, out to the public and let the public through. We'd figure out the voting process and stuff like that. But essentially, the public would cast their votes, and the winner would be the one that we, that we adopted. So that might be a good starting point, is if counsel's comfortable with that process. We don't need to figure out exactly how the votes are going to be taken or anything like that yet. But the broad philosophy around, we'd pick, say, three, or five, or whatever, and let the public vote on them from there. What we'd need to be clear on is what we're then doing with that public information. Is that going to be just taken as reference for counsel to make a final decision? Or is counsel gonna say, you know what, the public said, the public voted the most for this one, and that's the one we're gonna go with? So that's, that's important for us to know as we're communicating this, so that we can let the public know what exactly they're, we're gonna do with their input.
Counsel McGee.
I have a question. When it comes to the variegated colors, when it comes to some of the other postings, so when it's on to our blazers or on to your vehicles, are those more difficult or more expensive? Does that have a factor?
Through the chair, I, I don't know if it's, I think embroidery probably would be the one that is a bit of a difficult. And I think that gradients are difficult, just for that purpose. But on paper and anything else, the gradients are fine. It would just basically be three different colors, kind of like the flag. It would just be three different variations of that color going throughout. So I mean, it definitely can be done. The other, the professional logos all have gradients in them, so they definitely can be done that way. Or they could be embroidered all green or all blue, because that's what we do with our current logo anyway. We, we allow staff, when we're doing our swag and stuff like that, to pick our own colors as well, so. Thank you.
Counsel Penner.
I did not pick the first two for that reason, just the coloring. I, I, are we going to be modifying it multiple times for different advertising, is what I'm worried about? And, and we want to be identified. So if we're constantly changing, are we going to stand out like we do right now? I had a lot of positivity with the basic, the, our old one, even though we changed it a little bit, people really liked that.
Counsel Keever.
Yeah, I, I'm wondering why the first two got so many votes when they're so bland looking. You guys voted, give me your reasons.
They were bland looking.
Yeah, Glenn, I did a, I did a straw poll kind of at the, that shoot down on Sunday morning at Toshu. And I think it's just, it's recognition. It's so similar to what we have, and everybody likes it. They, you know, they look at the new ones, and maybe that, that is just too much. But everybody there commented that, yeah, they liked the first two.
It's the bland color.
Exactly. Yeah, yeah, they don't, well, it could be maybe the age of the people there that I talk to, because, you know. Well, it is possible. We're mostly colorblind now. We need glasses to see, so. But it is, they, with the straw poll, they did pick the first two with the bland colors.
Well, so much for that.
I only pulled a handful of people that were close to me, and the comments I had on those ones that appear bland, which I guess we could brighten slightly. But they really liked that. It came back to the discussion we had about, we're farming, we're oil, we're clay in the badlands, and it kind of indicates that we have such a variety within. And that was the reason why they claimed it. Plus, I repeatedly got the same thing. People don't want drastic change, so having it somewhat like the old has been really a favorite.
Counsel King.
I guess I have a hard time going from the current Neheil County logo to this, one of the alternative high votes. It's a lot of money to pay just for a color change. And if we're not making, you know, I guess it's up to not only ourselves, but our ratepayers, if we're gonna poll them to see what they have to say. But to me, it seems like an extreme amount of money to spend to change the color of the map that's in the background and to change the font. I have a problem with that. But, I mean, that's the process of democracy, right? This is that you give people choice, and choices are made. And so, if we're going from Neheil County with the current logo that we have to Neheil County with some bland background, I guess I, I, I find that a difficult process. One of the things I was gonna say earlier, it seems to me like there's four kind of themes there. There's the Neheil County bland, there's the Neheil County, is that a hexagon? Yeah, hexagon or circle. There's the Neheil County with the three swooshes, and there's the Neheil County with what looks like, hmm, potentially a square fish or something with an eyeball. But anyway, so there's four, there's four sort of directions that seem to be coming there. And so my thought was, is it possible to take one of each of those four options and suggest that that might be what we put out there? And if it comes back that Neheil bland happens to be the direction that the majority go, are we, as a counsel, prepared to spend money to go Neheil bland? That's my question.
Thank you, Counsel King. I see bland is the popular word lately.
Well, either that beats green bananas, right?
I see your point. Counsel Christie, you have a comment?
I guess my comment, the bland background makes the, the print stand out better for me. Like, it's just, you've seen too many signs lately where they get too busy and you miss the message.
Counsel Keever.
I, I guess the bottom row of ones, in my opinion, you need a very vivid imagination to see the relationship to Neheil County from any one of those. Yeah, maybe it's old fashioned to have the Neheil County shape in the thing, but at least when you take the words out of it, you know what you're looking at.
Well, I see it's a tough decision, but I think we should probably make one.
Sorry, through the chair. Counsel, maybe you just want to go through, like, pick between F1 and F3 just to narrow it down, and then pick between C2 and C4, narrow it down, E1 and the one that's not numbered, that looks like the flag, the three layers? Like, maybe you just want to choose, because there's two of each up there. Maybe you just want to choose that, and we can kind of narrow, narrow those choices down to five. And then maybe we can print them off, and you guys can look at them printed, and, I don't know.
Counsel Penner.
I actually like that idea. I like what Ken said, to put maybe the four out there or whatever. So by doing this, it, it might make it easier which four we choose.
Anybody want to stick their neck out and figure out which four? Counsel King.
I'd gladly go out on a limb. I would say F1, C2, A3, and B3. A3, B3.
I would like to say I agree with each one of those.
Sorry, Fay, I didn't hear that.
Ken, King, you made great decisions.
I'd like to come.
Counsel Penner.
I'd like to replace B3 with E1.
I'd be 100% okay with that. Yeah, no problem. I was just looking at the size of the logo as one compared to the other. Not so much color or anything, so. So B1 would be fine with me, Deb, yeah.
Sorry, E1.
Oh. Sorry. So which one are you replacing?
B3.
B3 with E1? Okay.
I can't comment, because mine doesn't have a number to it.
Why did you say that? Sorry. The question, Jim and I are just sitting here talking about E1, and our wonder is, other than we tweaked the font, it's really the same as what we've had previous, right? We've, we've changed the shape of the county, we've, I guess we've compressed it, so it's not, it doesn't interfere so much with the lettering, but.
That's correct. It doesn't interfere as much. They've moved it over a little bit.
I guess, you know, when, when I made my original selections, it was just four different options, keeping a similar option to what we previously had had, so. But it's a counsel wish, so.
Well, I think, and I'm not sure why I think this, but because F1 and E1 are fairly similar, it's just the coloring. If we decide on the style, we can probably work on the coloring when we come back for a final decision. Would that be something that counsel would be interested in approving?
I have just a discussion point over F1 and F3. To me, Neheil County's long and skinny, and F, yeah, and so F1 is much wider, F3 looks like our county.
Yeah, I believe F1 is just taking the same shape that our old logo had, but it's, it's not entirely accurate. So F3 is the more, like, actually the border of the county.
Counsel McGee.
I, I really see what Deb's saying. I, I prefer the F3 outline of the county over the one that's in F1, but I still like the, the font and, yeah, so. That's making it very difficult, but that was my, my first reaction. When, if you were to just have just the colored portion of the map, that would look very nice standing alone, whereas the other map, I think would look a little bit odd with all the nicks and...
So if we took the, the font on F1 and kind of moved it to F3, is that what you're saying? Okay.
So are we getting any closer?
I guess we just need to have a vote over E1 and B3 to move forward here. You know, what's the majority? Thank you.
Is that the consensus of counsel? We'll take a vote over E1 and B3, was it? Counsel Penner?
I, I think you're right, though, Jerry, in that we picked the three kind of shapes. We can pick the colors later.
Okay. Morphed. Oh, no, it's gone. Okay, what's the consensus here? Should we make a decision? Okay, from what I'm looking here, we're morphing F1 and F3 together. We're looking at C2. We're looking at A3. And B3, am I correct? And we can adjust the coloring at a future date. Well, the E1 can become a morph between F1 and F3 if you just want to make it a yellow one, because ultimately, the Neheil County stays as a Neheil County, it's just the coloring. Somebody like to make a motion? Counsel Penner.
I'll make that motion, that we go with those five, and let the ladies carry on with them. Four, uh, one, four, sorry.
Okay, thank you very much. We will wait until this comes up on the screen. And that gives the communications staff enough direction. Count, or, sorry, Mr. Hogan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The, just for our clarification, wanting to make sure that we'll need to communicate to the, to the residents or to the public exactly what we're gonna do with the information that we get back. So when I've heard, when I hear comments saying, and then we'll make a final decision and stuff like that, what I'm taking from that is that we're gonna go and gauge the public where they, what they want to see, but the final decision will be made by counsel around this table. That's what I'm collecting. That's what I'm collecting so far. I just want to confirm that, because we want to tell the public that when we're taking their input, so that they're not looking at this saying, you know what, whoever gets the most votes wins. Because if you're making the final decision around this table, that might not be the case.
And thank you for that clarification, because that's what I meant, is that council would make the final decision.
And that's just the clarity we're looking for, so we can advertise it properly and accordingly, and make sure that the residents are understanding of what we're doing.
So would you like that added to the motion? Or are we good with the motion the way it is?
I think we're good with the motion as we is, or, sorry, as we is. I think we're good with the motion as it is, just as long as we as admin have the clarity that the final decision will be coming back to council to make.
Very good. All right, well, we do have a motion before us. One final chance. Does anyone have any discussion to that motion? Counsel McGee?
Just to be a troublemaker...
I'll take your mic away.
When we first had this discussion, my intent was, what's voted by the public for the logo is the logo. And then we would just simply be a matter of process to approve it, so I just want to bring that debate back again. If we're going to get them involved, what's the point of doing the work and the expense of getting them involved if we don't? I thought we kind of said, you know, these are the ones we could live with, so whatever wins, wins.
I'll weigh in, and this is the second time in this meeting that Fay and I are going to be in 100% agreement. That was the, that was our discussion, and that was the intent of the discussion that we had, is that it was one way that we could involve our ratepayers in a consultative process to say, this is a decision we're looking at. If we, if we were to swim upstream against a outstanding public reaction that said logo F morphed, and we decided no, I think we're going somewhat on risky ground. So perhaps, to get people to buy into this process, and to say to them, "We like your opinion, but we really aren't going to listen to your opinion," I don't know. So I'm with Fay. I think maybe we better weight this more strongly towards that public poll.
Okay, so that's more direction to count, or to administration. I think it's an opposite direction than what we, you had asked for, so is that what council wishes to do? And I guess we'll have that discussion.
Maybe it should be a second motion.
Okay, let's make that a second motion. So let's deal with the motion that we have in front of us. And I'll call the question. All those in favor? And, okay, that was carried unanimously. Now, I think it's more direction than a motion, is it not? Mr. Hogan?
We can, we can take that direction through the motion, because really what we're determining is, it going to be a, you're right, the two, the two things that we heard are contradictory to each other, and that's why I posed the question, is we want to make sure that we're doing, we're putting this out to the public the way you guys envision it, so that we're not coming back later trying to figure out what we're going to do with the data, right, as we know ahead of time. So this absolutely could be a second motion, in terms of the public consultation be, we'll figure out the wording, but essentially, is the public making the decision, or is the public providing input to council's decision? Either way, council's going to have to be the ones to formally adopt it at the end. It's just a matter of, if you're just going to rubber stamp the one that the public tells you to, or if you're just taking that as a, say, under advisement for when you just make your final decision.
What's council's wishes? Counsel King.
I guess I've heard from Fay, and I've heard from myself, I'd be interested in a little more how the rest of council feel about that direction.
Counsel Hugo.
I agree with Fay and Ken that we should, we should leave it up to the public. This is their county, we're just kind of working for them, and what they decide is what they're going to get. So it's just, that way they do have more input into what, which direction they maybe want to see out here for our county.
Counsel Penner.
I agree 100%, but when we present them, ladies, will you have a variety of colors, or how will that be? Or you'll just have the four? And will that color stuff come back to us later on? Or I think that they should have some, say, in some options or whatever, like...
Ladies, I understood that we will make these the formal ones as you had, without color questioning to the public. It will become their, the logo they, my proposal is, let's say they come out unanimous, really high for C2. C2 will be it, but you're going to give the freedom to the people who use that logo within house to adopt the colors they need for whatever they may be printing. Is that how you were, what you were meaning by color change?
Deb.
Mr. Hogan.
Through, through you, Mr. Chair. Typically what's done, I would say if we, if we opened up the, if we opened up the color choices during, during the public one, we might get back a whole ton of variance that were, might not put us further ahead than where we are now. But where, what generally is done, is you adopt the logo with a color pattern, then you create visual standards. So that means that regardless of what the, the colors wouldn't change from logo to logo. The color pattern becomes a part of your logo. So if that was, say, under F1 or F3, the morphed version of that, those would be the color schemes there. And what you would do under the visual standards is in the, in the different color palettes, or I probably have palette the word wrong, but the, whether it's RGB or CKMY, which are different color schemes that printers use, you would have exactly what shades of blue, or gray, or gold you are using in there, and your logo gets printed like that each and every time. So it doesn't deviate, the colors don't deviate from use to use. If that's your brand, that's always your brand. Where it does deviate is that you would have a colored version, you'd have a grayscale version, you'd have a black and white version, and you would use the one, the one accordingly on, on those. So that's, that's the creation of the visual standards document that says each time that Neale County's logo gets used, this is the, this is how it's used in whatever applications. You don't get, you know, one truck goes out with the, the short and fat county, and the other truck goes out with the tall and skinny county. There, it's the same logo on every door, right? Maybe the size is different, but it's the same, the same one. Yeah.
Okay, thank you for that, does that answer your question? So are we looking for a motion here, or are we looking for direction?
I'd like to suggest that we direct.
Are we good with that? Counsel, Mr. Hogan?
You keep, keep trying to give me that promotion today. Is, so the, the understanding that we as staff are walking away from, with, from this meeting today, and what we're going to advertise to the public, is that we're going to give them these options, they're going to go through a voting process or an input process, it looks like a vote, and the one that they, that gets the most votes is going to be the one that, the one that we're choosing. That's, right now, that's the understanding that I think we as admin are walking, walking out with. And we can figure out what the nature of that vote looks like, if that's just going to be a straight vote, or people are going to rank them, and we need one to get over 50, stuff like that. We can figure out all that stuff, and figure out how that's going to work. But like I said, that's the understanding we're walking out with right now.
Okay, sounds great. And everybody gets 16 votes? Okay, I take that back. Everybody gets one vote. Okay, so we're good? We're done with that? Yep, 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 yep. Okay, very good.
I was just looking on the old logo. Neale County is short and fat. So maybe it should be drawn to scale.
That's back when we were fat and happy and prosperous. We were short and fat. Now we're tall and lean and thin and mean.
Okay. Let's move on to 8.6.
We get a vote on it.
That was direction. We voted on, did we not vote on the F1, F3, C? Oh, we didn't? Okay, I'm sorry. Just getting so far ahead of myself. Okay, so we are, council approves logo, the morphed version between F1, F3. Did somebody make that motion?
Yes.
Yes, okay. C2 and, oh boy, was that A3 or B3? A3 and B3. Okay, so we have four. Okay. Ah, okay, we have a motion before us. I hope everybody understands that motion. Is it written? Yes, it is. All those in favor? Okay, that's carried. Opposed? Opposed? Glenn, did you vote? Four? Four? Okay, so that was unanimous. Okay. Okay, I apologize, I'm quite confused, but it's not the first time today. We will now go on to 8.6. Mr. Hogan? Got it right that time.
So the item before you is a request from the Toshuun District Agricultural Society. We received a request from the Toshuun District Agricultural Society for a cash donation and sponsorship to the Canada Day event on Saturday, June 29, 2019. This has been an event that's been, been going on for at least a couple of years. Neale, we have never donated to this event in the past. That being said, our recommended action is that we possibly provide some funding under the Recreation Community Arts and Culture Policy. Under that policy, or in the 2019 budget, council budgeted $10,000 in 2019. To date, about, just over 3,700 has actually been allocated from that 10 grand. So there is funding in there, should council choose to provide some.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. What are council's wishes? Counsel McGee.
Do we donate to any of the other parades or sports days in our county?
Yeah, we should under a card.
We have not. Thank you.
I removed it. I move that we, we see this as information.
We have a motion before us. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing as none, I will call the question. We have a motion before us to receive as information. All those in favor? Opposed? It is carried. Okay, we will now move on to disposition of delegate and public hearing business. 9.1, the Stars Foundation. Mr. Hogan?
So council accepted the, or council had the delegation from earlier today from Stars, and we're just looking for direction as to what council wishes to do with that. You have a current obligation that you've put upon yourselves in place currently, so we're looking to see if council wishes that to continue for a period of, we've got five years, could be three, could be any other number, commencing in 2021 to Stars. What we'll do with this is if council chooses to continue that, continue that sponsorship on, we'll build that into the upcoming budget discussions, which of course, we have to move to the following year, and then a plan for out to, out to three years.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hogan. Council, back in 2016, had moved to provide $3,000 for a period of five years. We're still under that commitment, but that could change with this council. What is council's wishes? My personal feeling is, is we have committed to it, so I would prefer to hold on to that commitment.
Through the chair, Mike, are you asking, though, for us to also speak beyond the 2021 budget?
Through you, Mr. Chair, is where we are looking for the, if council wants to give that direction now, you know, 2019 and 2020, those will be built into, into the budget. Going forward, moving into three-year budgeting, as we're required to do under the MGA, is looking to see if we want to have that, if council knows that you want to continue that on right now, we'll build that in. You also have the option of just accepting for, for information, which you've already done, and you can have that discussion come budget time as well.
So if we're looking for, because of a three-year budget, are we looking to approve 2021 as part of that?
You could, you could approve it, or you could direct us to include it in the budget for, for discussions.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. What is council's wishes?
It's a service that we hope we never have to use, and I think 3,000 compared to some other municipalities is, is not a lot of money, but I would like to see it stay at 3,000 for a period of five years, commencing in 2021.
We have a motion before us to go out from 2021 for five years. Am I correct in that motion? Okay, is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing as none, I will call the question. And do we have that on the screen? Yes, we do. Okay, all those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Okay, we will now move on to 9.2, Bylaw 1797. Welcome back, Ms. Hazelton, and anytime you're ready.
Thank you. Mr. Eve, I'm going to have to excuse myself from this portion of the meeting, if I could, please.
Okay, let the records show that Counsel King has excused himself from this portion of the meeting. Sorry about that, Ken.
That's okay. No problem.
Again, this is a request for decision regarding the Town of Toshuun Neale County intermunicipal development plan. In the spring of 2018, amendments to the Municipal Government Act came into effect, including the requirement for all municipalities who share a boundary to work together to adopt an intermunicipal development plan. The purpose of these plans is to foster a collaborative planning approach for lands along the common border between the two municipalities. This will ensure that certain identified areas are viewed with regional perspective. By implementing a plan that contains both guidelines for future use as well as agreed dispute mechanisms, urban and rural municipalities can reach agreement without negative impacts on either municipality. From the perspective of both municipalities, enhanced management of the land within the IDP area identified will prove advantageous for the long-term interests of the municipalities and their residents. A proposed draft was created, and the administration and the assigned committee from both Neale County and the Town of Toshuun have meant to review and revise the proposed draft. The draft that has been attached is the outcome of this review. This draft notes the following objectives. It provides a framework for collaboration with developing lands within the IDP area. It promotes open communication between the town, county, public, and interested stakeholders. It promotes respect for each other's jurisdictional autonomy and integrity. It provides a framework for the provision of services and infrastructure required for the joint planning area that demonstrates an equitable, efficient, and proactive approach. for the joint planning area that demonstrates an equitable, efficient, and proactive approach. It is a guide to collaboratively plan for lands within the IDP area that will promote opportunities for residential, commercial, industrial, and economic development while minimizing land use and environmental impacts. The next step in this process was to provide an opportunity for public comments and feedbacks. Landowners within the defined plan area have all been notified regarding the proposed IDP. Notifications for the public hearing were posted as required in the Three Hills Capital, our website and Facebook page. Troschu has held their public hearing on June 10. It did receive all three readings. Our public hearing was held today at 10:00 AM. So our recommendation is that council move second reading of Bylaw 1797, and that council consider further readings or finalize it by third reading of Bylaw 1797.
Thank you, Barb. What is council's wishes? Any questions for Barb? Comments, concerns? Counselor Christie?
I'd like to move second reading of Bylaw 1797.
Okay, we have a motion before us to have second reading of Bylaw 1797. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing's none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? That is carried unanimously. Counselor McGee.
I'd like to move for third reading of Bylaw 1797.
Thank you. We have a motion for third reading of Bylaw 1797. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing's none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? And that is also carried unanimously. Thank you, council.
I move third reading of Bylaw 1797.
Oh, did I? Did I? No, we already did third reading. We did second and third reading.
First reading was done.
First reading we did prior.
In June. First reading was done when the hearing was declared.
Yeah. If we, if we do all three in one meeting, we have to have consideration for third. Nope, we had third reading. Okay. Mr. King. Somebody want to go get this? Nope, he's back.
I always keep the tabs on you.
Okay. Okay, we will now go on to agenda item 10. Council and Committee Reports. We've got a couple of reports here. They've been pre-circulated. Are there any concerns, questions? Counselor King.
I make the motion to receive as information the council and committee reports.
Okay, we have a motion before us to receive the council committee reports for information. All those in favor? And that is carried. We will now move on to council follow-up action list. Counselor Penner.
I see that everything is either completed or in progress here or within the next month or so, so I will, I would move to receive as information.
Okay, motion's been made to receive the council follow-up action lists for information. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. And 1126. How much stuff do we have for a closed session? Are we gonna be able to do this in half an hour or less, Mr. Hogan? You hope so? Okay. So the rest of it, it's up to us, is the way, what you're saying. Okay, would someone like to move us for closed session to deal with land section 25? Wait. Counselor Christie moves us into closed. Counselor Christie moves us into closed.